Just as guilty as the ones that, you know, want to see the trees and, you know, and kind of later to your view. So, aside from the traffic being a river, property values, our property values, my property value personally has been diminished because, you know, and not just my property values, you know, I'm involved in real estate somewhat. So, if my comps are low, my neighbors' comps are low. So, that's going to be, you know, obviously, a situation with Briar Cliff and Cliff House. And, um, I'm sure whenever it's going to be built, the price will be so high that it would benefit you, but it is going to hurt us, you know? And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor, I know you, you're a very nice man, but when you're sitting there pointing your finger when you're talking and then smiling when somebody says something you like, the people who don't know you as well as me in this audience might not think so.
Apologies.
Check your prior opinions. That's not my opinion, it's... Okay, it's my opinion, you're a nice guy. Am I wrong?
Nice, nice.
Um, Mayor, I am a resident of Edgewater, and I come to these meetings twice a month for at least 12 years. And I'm glad to see, you know, to hear you say that your concern is Edgewater residents and their tax values. However, that's not been my experience. I've come here and spoke about issues which were extremely important to residents, from traffic, density, high-rise development, to situations as dirty streets and garbage cans on all over the sidewalk. And this council hasn't taken consideration to a single one, uh, thing that I've ever asked. And I've spoke to some of you privately, you seemed very amenable, but when you sit on this dais, it's a whole different thing. So, but I'm glad that you said that publicly. Um, the other thing I want to say is you talked about the developer who, um, to the gentleman from Cliffside Park about the developer who, you know, developed St. Moritz and, you know, Cliffside Park is begging them, you know, they got that big hole in there, and they're begging him to develop. Well, yes, because he created that hole. It's the same developer, and it's the same developer that developed... (applause) And that developer in Cliffside Park, as well as in Edgewater, got substantial money, taxpayers' money, in this form of grants, in the form of this council giving him special tax abatements for his co-op projects. So, I wanted to just clear that up. Uh, I, there is a, I'm very concerned that a traffic study hasn't been presented. When I was on the council, even when we did in 2004, we began a reexamination of the master plan, which is not, you know, just a reexamination. Mr. Burgess, the planner at that time, did do a traffic study. Um, I actually brought it with me, just in case you need proof. Um, my concern why there's not a traffic study is because I travel on the road every day. I'm not here to talk about my view, I'm here to talk about my quality of life. Rutgers did a study, and I repeat this every time, that shows for every dollar you take in for development, you spend a dollar sixty-four. It doesn't have to be just for schools, you have to provide cleats, you have to provide DPW workers, you have to provide staff. This all comes at a price. And I have not seen a study that says it costs less for the development to be wide rather than high. For me, it really doesn't matter as much. What I'm concerned about is density, because density means people, means cars, means quality of life goes down, that's what I'm concerned about. Um, I, there is a traffic study that former councilman Wenzler was kind enough to supply me with, and it's the River Road Hudson waterfront circulation study. If you'd like a copy, I'll give it to you here. And I just would like to read some notes from that. "This proposed amendment to Edgewater's master plan will worsen traffic in Edgewater. The River Road Hudson walkway circulation study, conducted by the Bergen and Hudson Planning and Economic Development Departments, concluded that the entrance, egress, to Edgewater Commons already has a level of service, LOS rating, of E or F, depending on whether you are making a right or a left turn into or out of the Commons." An E or F, that's as bad as it gets. "These are the worst possible vehicle flow rates in terms of traffic delays. The study was of morning and evening rush hours. The circulation study also found that River Road traffic where it intersects with Gold Road, opposite sin place, to near, to be nearly as unacceptable as the Commons, with their D and an E, LOS rating." Have you guys discussed this? Have you actually discussed the traffic that we're going to be, that you're adding on to? "This zoning change will bring substantial additional traffic. It defies reality that increasing height and density allowances of a development will not increase traffic on what is already an extremely congested area. The proposed zoning change in the borough's most congested traffic area does not serve the public good. And contrary to the testimony of the planner Catherine Gregory, this amendment to the master plan will not foster a low-density pedestrian-friendly area to Shady Side or anywhere along the waterfront. One can understand a developer wanting to have the zoning changed. This zoning change will be a financial windfall for the developer. However, aiding a developer with his profit margin is not a sufficient reason for Edgewater's governing body to place such a burden on the residents of Edgewater." What's really very disappointing to me, and I know all of you, and I know some of you more than others, and I know you to be good people, is that with all the concerns, this room is, room is full, not only with Cliffside people, but with Edgewater people, you're not going to care, you're going to do what you always do. You're going to be guided by the developer who essentially tells you what to do. We've been told...
Those are the times of...
Okay, I get one more minute like you gave the other gentleman. We've been told that the reason to do this is because you want to make the property in the Shady Side area conforming...
The timer's up, we have five minutes for... Hold on, go ahead, I'll give you the minute that he said again.
The reality is ninety-nine percent of Edgewater is non-conforming. Thank you.
Thank you.
My commissary, I'm from Old River Road, Chedside.
No, he's not.
Which is the only zone that which is not going to be changed. I have commercial property, 264, 266, Old River Road, 264 and 266 is an Edgewater landmark, it's a fairytale. To the people from Cliffside Park, quite a few, I want to introduce myself as the person donated to Edgewater in 1998, this, the gray strip here on the west side of Gold Road. When you drive down on Gold Road, you probably noticed that from St. Moritz all the way to Legend Hills, it's unbuilt, undeveloped, because I gave a deed to the borough of Edgewater in 1998 that specified that this land is to remain undeveloped in perpetuity, which means there's not this disintegration, dislocation to this. (applause) That's why I say it, because you're not going to lie on that ground.
Please, please, show everybody else the respect that you receive, please.
I need to take half a minute, beyond the five, to support Mary on some, use the mic, technical...
Speak into the microphone, please.
And to support Mary on an important technical issue. Without going into numbers, we are talking about the lot under the new childcare facility. Um, I know because I sold it to the developer, and when I sold it to him, we restricted the deed, we said, no residential.
I took a look at this, and Mary was concerned about she doesn't know what West and Thompson mean, that's what it means, the childcare center is not being resolved. So, I want to put this issue to bed before we have more conversations about it.
I'm sorry about you.
Mary, Mary, have your time.
Because those lots do not exist in New York City.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Michael Missari, you have four. I don't know how many minutes you have left, but continue.
No, I completely, I find it fine. This is called, no, no, use the mic.
Speak into the microphone.
They do exist, not now.
I, so I come, I come from the center of the district, so we are not being resolved. I love it, because when I look around me, all I see is industrial wasteland. And what this ordinance presents is a vision. It's not just vision for high buildings and a lot of traffic, it's a vision for, for, like, almost an urban hub which is connected, which caters to pedestrian activity, and I don't want to take it out of the time, but it's spelled very well in the zoning ordinance. And it will be the job of the board, of the planning board and the zoning board of adjustment to make sure that those amenities, that what ties this whole area together, pedestrian, is implemented like that. Now, if the nature of the plan is density, without density, something like this doesn't work. Now, what's wrong with density? So, if you go to the internet and look at high-density residents, you'll see what's coming at you. All the planning reports are talking in favor of high density. Allow me to read a few lines. "Advantages of density: In addition to meeting a growing market demand, high-density developments offer economic, environmental, and aesthetic advantages to communities. More efficient provision of public services, that is, utility emergency services. High-density development protects our region's natural area, as well as minimize the encroachment of development on farms, forests, and ecologically sensitive environments." "New developments and revitalization projects can include desirable amenities which may not be possible with sustainable lower densities." And let me give you an example right here. One Hudson provided the neighborhood with a park. A few little buildings would not have done it, it's a fact. Now, so, this is as far as high-density is concerned. I mean, this is, I have another report that say, this is the future. Um, as far as high-wiseness. Uh, that's the way to take the density and test it out. Took Avalon, Avalon is seven hundred feet of wall along Undercliffe Avenue. There was a similar proposal for, for, for Shady Side. After the Conover facility was built, the master plan showed a low, long building all the way from Conover Hill to Thompson Lane, a few hundred feet long. And we objected to it, and finally, this long building that we called long, three-fourth story, was, we called the Chinese Wall, was stood up on end, and Shady Side today is visible from River Road, and River Road is visible from Shady Side. And I want to tell you, Shady Side, which looked like a neighborhood ready to be torn down, every single building in Shady Side, since this zoning went into effect, renovated itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody is serving, huh?
Yeah.
Where do you live, Mike? Everybody's house is in the old, old area, but I'm going to stay there. I live in Briar Cliff, too, in Wood Road, and I'm not going to rehash what everybody's already said about the density and the traffic and the pollution and all that, I'm going to address the view, as other people have. And I set the door at East Hudson River and Manhattan. One of the reasons, not the major, one of the reasons I bought my apartment was because I have this expansive view. And to me, it's an asset. So, when I want to sell my apartment, I'm sure you're going to say that, if there's a view versus building, my asset goes down, fiscal numbers. And I understand your fiscal responsibility, but I know the view has some meaning to you folks, because in urban record of December 6, when this meeting was rescheduled, one of the things you said here is, building upward rather than horizontally would preserve more views of the Hudson, Manhattan skyline, Hudson and Manhattan skyline. It's obvious that views are important, and, you know, to be perfectly frank, the way I see this is, views are okay for the people in Edgewater, you know, to heck with the people that are behind us. And, you know, I, I hope that you would consider what that means to assets, if we have 310 apartments now, an hour building, and it's important to us, just put yourself in our shoes. And what we mentioned earlier about the, I'm really not aware, you know, I'm just not, I'm here for us, what's going on in my front yard. And, you know, if there's anything that we've learned or heard over the last couple of days of the tragedy in Connecticut, one of the things is civility. And you may say that Edgewater is, and the difference between me and Edgewater is the driveway between me and the St. Moritz. So, you know, what's done in Edgewater definitely affects me, and it's like saying, you may be my neighbor, but I'm going to stick this in your face anyway. And I don't know how high this is going to go, or if it is even going to affect me, but I hope you folks take that into consideration and take into account people, not just money and civility. Thank you.
You know, I just want to respond because I don't want to miss you later on down the road. One thing you said was you have an expansive view, and you know what, I'm not looking to harm your view, your expansive view, but, you know, what works for Edgewater is in my best interest, and at the end of the day, I don't believe we're going to defect that expansive view to the point where it's going to have a major effect on your value. You know what, I mean, how, how far do you go? I live on Undercliffe, I grew up on Undercliffe, and they developed a property down the block for, all right, the Bella Homes. I lost my view of the river. You know what, it's just reality for me, I grew up, every time I came out and got on my truck, I could look down the river, but I say to myself, how much of a right did I have to that view? I mean, listen, I'm a resident, I had to deal with the big, the impact it had on traffic and all, but at the end of the day, my view was taken away, and, you know, believe me, I know where you're coming from, but I think with one development that we're talking about, how much of a 360-degree view of you are you entitled to? And that's what I would ask.
Seven three-sixty degrees.
Well, 180 then, the whole, the whole river down south to the Barazano up to the bridge. You know, if we put one tower up to benefit us, and it's not going to be a tower, I mean, you know, it's, it's, the density would, the density would stay the same, the height of the building would change, and it's, who knows what's going to happen? We're looking to provide corridors for people in Edgewater. Sorry, anyone else wish to be heard? Sir?
My name is Jim Samler, I'm from the Briar Cliff also. My question is, we had, not two months ago, we had a natural disaster that happened, and we had the opportunity to look down and see that Edgewater fared a heck of a lot worse than Cliffside Park did. And now you want to add to the infrastructure problems and add to the problems that have gone on down there, so that if we have another natural disaster, and with global warming and climate change, there is a real possibility that that's going to happen. And now you want to add density, add people, add to the infrastructure problems, and add to the cost, and make it harder for people down in Edgewater to be able to get out in case of an emergency, and it's going to be much more costly with more people down there to, to resolve that issue in the future.
My name is Janet Cohen, I'm in the Cliff House. And we're all talking about views, because many of us are concerned about our views. Views are not the issue. The issue is quality of life. And if I wanted to live in New York City, I would have moved there. And I moved here, this was supposed to be a quiet community, and now it's becoming New York City. That's the way I feel, and that's the way many people feel. As far as views, of course, having a view is great, but when you take the views away, and you stick buildings in front of us, our property values will go down to nothing. I have spoken to many people, many people are planning on selling their apartments, they don't want to be here anymore. I, for one, don't want to be here anymore. And I think that has to do with that. Thank you.
I just want to find out how many people here live across the street from the Cliff House and Briar, and the Briar Cliff. Any residents here that live across the street?
In the Briar Cliff?
Right, across the street from the Briar Cliff, where they have a couple of two-story, three-story, um, low rises?
But they are literally in the town.
I didn't think so.
They would build, what does that have to do with Edgewater? You represent Edgewater, quality of life here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bergen Cohen, I'm a resident at the Cliff House. I'd like to address Mr. Vadel's issue. We were asked to come tonight, the resident of the Cliff House, residents of the Briar Cliff as well. If we had solicited assistance from other people in the community, I think they would have responded, but that was not the case. One of the things, there's been so much discussed tonight, I don't want to be repetitive and redundant, one of the most specific and important issues that a board, like yourselves, must take into consideration is the growth aspect. We at the Cliff House and people at the Briar Cliff can't get out of our communities without a wait. It's a serious issue. You and I, as a member of a community in Cliffside Park, as, as concerned with Edgewater as I am with the waterfront. I've attended meetings at Cliffside Park, and I've attended meetings in Edgewater, for the same reason. We leave Cliff House in the morning to go to work, it's very difficult. And as traffic builds up, there's a piece of property next to us that hasn't been built, it's changed again several times because of the flooding. When that community gets built, it's going to be worse. A light was put up, there can't be a light for the Cliff House and Briar Cliff. Something's going to happen one day, just as we spent time and prevented, during this meeting, same issue belongs here, is traffic. You have a responsibility to the environmental issue of traffic. People in the United States have been talking about gunship control, nothing changes. We're not widening any of the streets, we're not widening any of the lanes. When you drive on a Saturday to go shopping in Edgewater Commons, it's almost undesirable because you know you're going to have to spend an extra fifteen to twenty minutes to go to a store. Yes, the stores are packed, yes, they're crowded, yes, they're filled with traffic, but that's not the issue. Issue is health and safety. There was an accident in our park in a very quiet area because there wasn't a traffic block, several people were killed. What does it take to come to the realization that we've become too crowded, and we're going to become even more crowded, which will represent the issue of traffic, which is one of the most important responsibilities? Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alyssa Samler, I'm a new resident of Cliffside Park in the park, and honestly, I was going to get up and say anything, but Mr., is it your dog?
Your dog.
You, uh, well, I don't know, I think that you really, my reaction to you is that you're a very hostile person. It was really unnecessary what you just said.
(applause)
Do you need to clarify five minutes?
Do you do?
I would like to just say a couple of things. One is, we're really old on community. In New Jersey, we have, I forgot, four hundred and something, or ten zillion towns. You know what, it's not going to be long before we're going to have to, we're going to have to merge a lot of those towns. We can't afford to be, uh, a lot, four hundred, six hundred towns anymore. So, before you know it, one day we may be, maybe one town, so, yeah, you should be careful what you say, that your town is literally, you know, I can, like, one gentleman said, I'm going to walk out of my driveway, I'm in, I'm in Edgewater, and, you know, I just moved here. So, one town to me doesn't mean anything from the other town, so I just wanted to point that out, that's the first thing. Second thing, so I couldn't give up about my view, what I do care about is people, I care about people being safe. And I couldn't stand it when I walked, looked out of my window and I saw boom, 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 a lot of those people losing their electricity. I lost my electricity too, but I also work in this community, I work at a, at a local hospital, and I know that there are people who are still suffering today from your community because they do not have, they still, they can have electricity, and they cannot move back into their homes. That is very, with children, and that is heartbreaking. So, I think that, that's something you should take in consideration, it doesn't really matter what town you live in, it doesn't really matter. And you know what, there are a lot of people who aren't here because they're apathetic, they've had it, they've had it with government, they've had it with politics. Think about that, I know you thought about that. I don't know what your, what your reason is for being in politics, I don't know what your reason is for being here, but you all have, we don't have reasons for doing what we do. You don't do it just because it feels good and you want to help people. No, I, I do a job that is to help people, and I don't do it just to help people, I get paid to, I get paid, I get paid to do, you don't get paid to do this?
I get paid very good.
Oh, okay, good for you, good, good for you. But I want to tell you, I was not going to get up here, but I, I just, I couldn't sit there and say nothing. So, I think this is about community, and I am, I'm opposed to your, to the, to this, you know how upset, but I'm opposed, I'm opposed to the development that you're, that you would, that you're, you know, having, for, you know, zoning, the rezoning.
Thank you.
(applause)
I'm Nancy Happy, Chris O'Malley, 814, Church of Royal Comfort. I have a question about, a question to, a question for the planner. The land use ordinance of the Borough Plan Order, Article 240-2, says that any developer should provide adequate light care in the water space. We are rezoning the different property in our five zones with a sliding scale, I don't know how many people know what it means. Sliding scale provides for twenty-story building, however, for every decrease in one percent of the building coverage, the developer can go one floor out. So, it should, it could, as Ms. Gregory stated before, become a forty-story building. So, it'll be divided by twenty stories that's on the zoning. Paragraph four, ensure that the development of the Borough Plan Order does not conflict with the development of general welfare of neighboring municipalities. Number one, it blocks the use of us people in North Bergen, it blocks the use of Cliffside Park, it does not comply with this zoning ordinance, of land use ordinance of Borough Plan Order. And number two, diminishes our property values. By losing views, we lose values in our properties, and we pay high taxes too. So, I disagree with the mayor that this is only about Edgewater and Edgewater residents. This, this land use ordinance provides for the welfare of neighboring municipalities. Number five, paragraph number five of that article, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. I asked numerous times the planner, how does a four-hundred percent increase in density on the neighboring property on the riverfront does not impact the town, the neighbors, and traffic? We have I park zones for twenty-five units per acre, yet Ms. Gregory rezoning Mr. Davis' Riverfront property to hundred units per acre. With sixteen acres, we are talking sixteen hundred units. Forty developed on sixteen acres, I believe, six hundred units. We are talking four-hundred percent huge increase in density. The paragraph eight of the same article says, "To encourage the location and design of transportation routes which will promote the free flow of traffic." You know what happened when Sandy hit? I cannot imagine how these people would be evacuated when River Road in front of the Borough Hall was completely flooded, nobody... Nobody could get in or out. There was three feet of water. Promote, paragraph number nine, to promote a desirable visual environment for creative development needs. Again, it goes to the matter of views. And the views of the river belong not to only Mr. Davis's residents in those buildings, but to all of us. I wanted to point that out. Article 240-126, multifamily developments. I want to know how Ms. Gregory applied that in her redevelopment plan. For any apartment development or building in excess of 12 units, at least 15% of the total land area shall be set aside and developed for usable recreation space. There's nothing in her report stating that. I wanted to find out that those 10 properties that were not identified on the tax map, we still don't know where they are. They don't exist on the tax map and they should be identified. Because we don't know which properties are being rezoned. I have a question about pedestrian traffic only on weekends and weeknights in Shady Side. What does that mean? Are we causing traffic to cars? Are we walking down there? How are we getting to those restaurants and businesses when the traffic is closed? I need some clarification on that. It's not specified in the amendment plan. And the last matter I want to discuss is Ms. Gregory's complaint on Mr. Davis's project where she reduced herself in 2010. And she explained at the last council meeting that she did that out of respect for Edgewater. She stepped aside and reused another plan. My question is, do you have the same respect for Edgewater in 2012 that you have in 2010? And maybe we should have an independent planner to do all these studies, including the traffic.
My name is Peggy Wong. I live in North Bergen, New Jersey. And actually, my apartment overlooks the I Park site. And for all intents purposes, but for the fact of the drawing on the zoning map, I could be a resident of Edgewater. Actually, I shop in Edgewater almost daily. I do all my major food purchases here. So I contribute to your economy. Now, when you say that, and I understand your position that as mayor, you have to look out for your Edgewater residents. However, if you're going to have retail stores here appealing to other residents other than Edgewater, you have to take into account the effect you're having on their surrounding towns. And in North Bergen, we have our own faults. I have to admit that. There are problems there. We have developments on Churchill Road. That's right across the street from this town hall. And I wish some of your residents had come to support us when we were protesting the fact that the cliffs were being torn down. Now, to show you that we all live in a community, as one of the gentlemen said, we are all a tight community and we should realize that. Because we are all going to have to depend on each other when there's an emergency. As such as the flooding that happened recently. That was a tragedy that visited all of us on River Road. It paralyzed the whole area and our economy. And now, there will come a point, and I'm one of those who firmly believes that this is not the first and only storm that's going to happen. We're going to have more like this. We're going to have to rely on each other. There are 566 municipalities in New Jersey. In Hudson County and Bergen County alone, we have probably, I'm guessing, almost 20 municipalities. We have to rely on each other, especially in this area. And I will tell you, I'll give you an example. In North Bergen, Churchill Road, that developer is trying very hard to put in a traffic light at the intersection of Churchill and River Road. If he is successful, I don't doubt that he's going to totally foul up your traffic pattern going into your town and out of your town. So we can have an effect on you as well. But I, I'm not saying that to be antagonistic. All I'm pointing out is, we depend on each other. And when you make your zoning and planning changes, it affects other towns. And one of the things that was done many years ago, to your detriment and also ours, is that when the light rail was coming through, there was a presentation made to Edgewater asking that Edgewater allow the light rail to come through this town. The administration that was in power then said no. And I would say that, I would eventually say that if you had the light rail now, that would increase your economy. It would, it would totally fill up your high rises. People would love to live here because that light rail is a wonder. Now, it benefits Hudson County. It does not benefit us here in Bergen and Hudson County, the northern section. But you made a bad decision then. I hope that when you say now that you really are tired of hearing about traffic problems and that you think that, well, it's just another traffic problem here. It's not. It's getting worse. And I'm sitting here, I'm just learning now that there's a couple of high rises going up not too far from where I live, in Cliffside Park. I am dismayed. We can't keep on sustaining all this development as much as you would like to. I don't know what's going to happen. I attended the hearings in Fort Lee. I saw those 247-story high towers. I'm appalled. Because that traffic's going to come right down River Road, right into Edgewater. It's probably going to edge, go into North Bergen as well. Now, by saying token, I have friends in Hoboken who've come up here, up until recently, to shop at your stores, at Whole Foods and Trader Joe's. I don't know if they will continue to do that if these developments go ahead and you get the traffic congestion that we all think is going to happen here. So I think you're dealing with a stick of dynamite. And I wish that you had done the right thing and gotten a good traffic study done. For you to go ahead and improve this development without a traffic study is reckless. And you're leaving yourself wide open for problems that you, you're not going to be able to solve it on. Just like you can't solve the light rail. You can't bring it back here. I mean, I wish you could. It would be tremendous for all of us. But you can't bring it back here because you made a bad decision then. Now, I'm asking you now to be careful on this because you're affecting not just Cliffside Park and Edgewater and maybe Fort Lee, but you're affecting North Bergen as well. We're all in a very tight circle here. We're all a small community and we have to rely on each other. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Pouring water, please. You know, I just, I'll make the point, I want everybody to be heard. And trust me, I do. And I get, I get the momentum that's going on. It's 8:30. We have a full agenda of things we have to cover tonight. I say continue on if you want, but at some point, if it is redundant, I mean, I get it. Like, so if at some point we can monitor regular order of business, it might make sense because we do have a program. And all, all the comments are very valid and will be considered. But I would suggest that the hour, based on our normal schedule, is getting late tonight. So if there's maybe perhaps some other points of view other than just a consistent theme, which is legitimate and your theme, I would suggest that we perhaps maybe try to wrap it up. Does anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Tina Munson, 270 Old River Road. And I do live in Edgewater. I came a little bit late, so I'm not sure if anybody talked about the Superfund Site. I was very involved in discussions with the EPA and with their final decision. It's called a record of decision, to clean up that site to a certain level of contamination. It was suitable, I believe, for recreational. Now, if there's going to be residential put on it, which I understand is what's going to happen, who is going to make sure that it is cleaned up to a standard adequate for the residential? Because as of now, the record of decision, which is a legal document, only cleans it up to a lesser standard of toxicity, whatever you want to call it. So I don't know what you plan to do about that. I mean, just, just to have the developer say he's going to clean it up isn't adequate. The legal document says it's going to be cleaned up to, I believe...
No development can be done there until the EPA or DEP say it's a permanent site. It's clean and it's safe.
But then there's going to have to be a whole nother process gone through to reach another record of decision because the record of decision at this point is not adequate. I'm just pointing that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? If you'd like to.
My name is Crystal Calabrese. I'm an attorney with Diggis Gillen. And we represent the borough of Cliffside Park. The borough's address is 525 Cal State Avenue. I'm just here to make an appearance and observe the proceedings this evening. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing not close the open portion of the meeting on 1485 2012.
These people make this.
I'm not quite sure what happened. Everyone just sort of... I can address some of the concerns. I can't address all of the concerns. Because some of the concerns were legal questions and engineering questions, which I have no authority to answer. I tried to address Ms. Hogan's comment about the Amityne project. We are not proposing to rezone the building that is the childcare center. If there are other restrictions, 2005, before my tenure here, I'm not aware of any other restrictions. But if there are, then that needs to be researched. But like I said, we're not resoning childcare property. A lot of assumptions are made, were made tonight, excuse me, about density. And everyone assumes density is a bad thing. And density is a bad thing when you drive your car. Density is not a bad thing if you actually walk. And that was the entire premise of rezoning the mixed-use districts and also the R5 district. It's kind of interesting. I heard many comments tonight about the density of the projects. But then I also heard about the shop aid. So really, I'm not quite sure what everyone expects Edgewater to do when we do have a significant portion of land that is vacant, the Superfund Site. It does need to be rezoned. It needs to be rezoned with something. And the WACAS research category is really defunct. I mean, obviously, I know that everybody that lives in Edgewater here in the council knows that Edgewater used to be a very different type of community. There were very many industrial plants that were located on the east side of River Road. And now there's not. And the OR1 zone just really doesn't function anymore. And so we needed to rezone that area and some of the surrounding areas as well that were zoned OR1. And so, do we rezone it retail? Do we rezone it office? Do we rezone it residential? It seems like no matter what we do, none of the residents here like it, except for a few that came in and said that they did like the idea of the higher density and the high-rise structures. I did respond to one of the residents in terms of the waterfront development permit requirements. That was the New Jersey Administrative Code. He came to the last meeting and handed me a sheet of paper with some requirements for high-rise structures. I did prepare a memorandum dated December 14, 2012, to the council. And what that states is that, number one, that the New Jersey Administrative Code, that does relate to the waterfront development permits, which are under the purview of the DEP. It does not relate to local zoning. With that said, there are a number of regulations that were handed to me regarding high-rise structures in particular. And I did a little bit of research on that. And I know no one in the audience is going to love to hear what I'm about to say. But there was a recent case that was actually decided in 2010, right in North Bergen, called the case of Bergen Development LLC. And based on that particular court case, excuse me, it was stated, "As a well-settled matter of law, in the absence of a restrictive covenant, a property owner has no right to an unobstructed view across a neighbor's property." And what this was concerning was the development of 17 townhouses and three high-rise structures. What was also noted by the court is that there were gaps in between those three high-rise structures that did provide views to the skyline of New York City. It also found that high-rise structure regulations for waterfront developments did not create an absolute prohibition against developments interfering with views of inland residents, but rather the qualified goal of protecting scenic views, quote-unquote, "to the maximum extent possible." Although the precise statutory basis for high-rise regulations under the Waterfront Development Act is not entirely clear, the pertinent regulatory history indicates that the regulations were substantially amended in 1990, so as to, quote, "provide a deep," I'm sorry, "provide more detailed guidance concerning the location and acceptability of high-rise structures," I'm sorry, "location acceptability of high-rise structures, especially along the waterfront." Among other things, provisions are aimed to prevent the buildup of high-rise buildings closely aligned along the coastline. And I can't say that our proposed zoning creates any of the type of environment. "In particular, the regulations are intended to permit the construction of high-rises only in portions of a waterfront area where these structures could serve as a focal point of a community, induce economic growth, generate, and, sorry, and generate additional water-oriented attractions to complement the natural amenities of a waterfront public use." Now, with that said, I believe that the intent of this particular rezoning with the R5 zone was intended to serve as a focal point of a community and induce economic growth. I think I made that fairly clear, even at the planning board level with the master planning process. We talked about that. We talked about the existing developments that have been approved, the existing commercial development that we have, the existing commercial development that's already been approved, that hasn't been built yet. And to try to support that in a manner so that we could potentially get people out of their cars and not driving. And also... The actual rules, the NJ, I'm sorry, the NJSC, the New Jersey Administrative Code, under Subchapter 7 Use Rules, Section 7, colon, 70, 7.2G, also states that the standards relevant to housing and transportation are as follows. Number one is, the development of housing at locations and densities that contribute to the feasibility of public transportation is encouraged. And so therefore, you know, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. Obviously, we don't have a light rail system, as was indicated. But we also need to have a certain type of population density to support potentially another marina stop, which has been talked about for years within the community. So when everyone comes and says that the traffic is so bad, the traffic is so bad, what we have to realize is that, number one, no matter what gets put on the Superfund Site, it's going to generate traffic, whether it's residential or not. Number two, as was stated by one of the residents, and we have evidentiary proof here, even in just Edgewater, that high-rise structures do actually produce less traffic, less cars, less people, and less schoolchildren.
Excuse me, allow Catherine the respect we show everybody else, please.
Yes. As I stated earlier, Hudson Harbor is a 22-story building. There are 246 units in Hudson Harbor. And this comes directly from the Board of Education. There are four schoolchildren in Hudson Harbor. I know that it was also mentioned about Avalon. Avalon has 406 units. I believe that a resident said there was 480. And there are 90 schoolchildren in Avalon. So that just goes to show you the difference in the type of housing structure and what it really produces. And I know one of the residents that happens to own property in Shady Side also talked about opening up the views. And that's what we're talking about doing here. I understand that the residents of Cliffside are obviously very concerned about high-rises. But after a certain point, what happens is that you're talking about a narrow, skinnier building that's taller versus a wider building. So that's where I, and that's where I'm going to explain about the sliding scale. It was... It was somehow indicated that by the sliding scale, we're allowing more square footage in the building. But that's absolutely untrue. There's an FAR limitation, which is a floor-to-air ratio. So that has nothing to do with it. The sliding scale has to do with the height and the setbacks for the building from side to side. So sliding scale has absolutely nothing to do with square footage. So I just needed to make that clear. Also, just as my, my mind is going, one of the residents brought up that I did have a conflict. I did talk about this in the last council meeting. My former partner, which I have not been a partner with for seven years, worked for Mr. Davies on several projects in Edgewater. We became the borough planners in the beginning of two thousand and seven. He and my partner had to obviously give up those applications. And I brought up as, I was brought on as representative because I had not done any work for Mr. Davies. I was the representative because I hadn't done work for Mr. Davies. And obviously, I was excluded from those particular applications that were going on at the time. This was in two thousand and seven. It is now two thousand and twelve. I believe that one of those applications came back in two thousand and ten. I made a phone call specifically to the zoning board attorney, asked him if he still thought there was a conflict. I did not feel that there was still conflict. And he did not feel that there was still a conflict. But then, as, as it would have it, when we came to the hearing on the project, there were some residents that were concerned about it. And rather than it be an issue, I recused myself. It's not because I thought that I should. I did it, as I said, just out of respect for Edgewater because I just did not make that to be another clip on the screen during application process. It just wasn't necessary. So I sort of take issue with that fact. Obviously, Edgewater has had me as a planner here since two thousand and seven. And so I don't under-